All the North Plains plan for January eleventh, the border at seven o'clock. We rise the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, in this book with good deed.
Thank you. Chair King, Vice Chair Labonte, Commissioner Howt, Commissioner Ken Odell, Commissioner Van Donnelan, Commissioner, Commissioner Nenning Camp, Commissioner Miller, and your ex officio this evening is Counselor Trista Paven. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone. I have another five and twelve points. Time for anyone in the audience or on the signal. No one in the audience?
There's no one on Zoom?
I have number six is approval of the minutes for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Everyone there go and then correction. And two three minutes. The move by Commissioner Nenning, expected by Commissioner Labonte for approval of December fourteenth, three thousand and twenty-two minutes are presented. All votes say to say aye. In the vote. Thanks for asking that. I have number seven is new business. It's not on our agenda. We have more new business. Not at this time. I have number eight is unfinished business. Sign code discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Chair King. Since we did not have any new business for you, we reached out to Chair King to see what you folks might want to talk about. We said that it probably be a good idea to revisit the sign code conversation that we had and see if we can kind of drill down on it a little bit more. So that's what we're going to do tonight. And it's more of an open forum type of a conversation, especially like we had before. Sounds like maybe some folks have had a little bit more time to review the sign codes with the Hertz net on it. So it seems like it would be a good idea since we are getting some new businesses into town and some of these sign requests applications coming in. So maybe pick a look at this and see if we have everything where we should have it. So, you know, one of the signs that came in that kind of started this conversation was the request by Royal High to put that large ground mounted sign on the Taco Bell property. That sign application has since been withdrawn. We kind of shared the conversation that you folks had at the last meeting. And that from the last time probably is a little bigger and probably in the wrong location than it was than where we needed to get approval. So he's withdrawn it and he's excited to hear that we're working on the site, looking, looking at it to see if, you know, there might be some changes and maybe later we might want to call him in so he can talk with you as well, but he was not available to this meeting. So one idea I had before we maybe we dive into the code, we have Google Maps up and maybe we can just take a drive down Blanco. And we can kind of see some of the signs that we have right now and that's probably the street that has some of the most prominent signs in the city. And we can kind of see we're all over the place on these signs. We got super big signs, we have small signs, especially the ground mounted variety. And so Laurie, if you can pull that up. So here we are on Blanco looking to the north and if you could just get up perfect. The one sign that sticks out to me right away is the Shell sign. That that's not necessarily a ground mounted sign. It's pretty close, but it's a little bit more of a freestanding sign, if you will. And in the C one zone and the C two zone, this site would be too big. This is well over the size limit. So I want to try and do a little bit of research on that because we've got the same issue at Chevron. And I know all the signs in this area, the McDonald's, the Shell and the Chevron. There's a clause in the sign code that kind of recognizes their signage and says, yeah, you're kind of grandfather here for these signs.
They're one tall sign. They're the all same as grandfather.
They're just tall. I appreciate the certification on that. And so that's really helpful. And then that might be, you know, one of the things we have to dive into through this exercise is to see how did some of these signs get here in the first place? You know, maybe we need to go back and reach for some of our records to get a better understanding of how these things got approved. Because my understanding is that there's not been really any amendments to the sign code for quite some time. Oh, you did. Oh, I'm sorry.
It seemed like it. Yeah. Yeah.
I heard that it hadn't really been looked at. So.
I mean, it wasn't the whole code, right? It was just some certain things. Yeah. But I can go back and find those in meetings.
Okay. Really? That's, that's good to know. I think that's, that's important because you can see we have some, some signs that are really unclear how they got there. And so, or if you want to just keep going down, I'll point out a couple more signs.
I'm going a little crooked here.
Yeah, that's pretty quick.
Yeah.
The one sign I'm thinking of is something right here.
So that one was recently approved, the insurance one.
That sign I was looking at and I thought that, that looks like our standard right there. That's a brown mounted sign by the tree there.
Yep.
You can scroll if you just roll in there a little bit. So that I would say is a sign that meets our current ground mounted sign standard in terms of the size, the location. You know, one thing we don't have in that ordinance right now is a height limit. So long as it's thirty-two square feet or less, it can be a taller ground mounted sign. But that sign, I think it's great, but the one to the north of it also appears to meet the current sign standards.
Which one are you talking about? Did I go past it?
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, it's switched. There's a maybe go back. Yeah, there we go. Okay, I'll turn around.
Search. I am not good at steering these. Oh, this one that.
Yeah. I would have to look at it. It does not appear to have an engine base. This one seems to have more of an engine base. That's kind of the idea. I would have to go and look at that sign there if we, you know, respect on it in terms of, you know, is it an engineer, some type of base for that, but it does not appear to be that way. But again, this one seems to be perfect. It's got the right. The only thing that would be wrong with this sign is it's in the clear vision area for the driveway. There, there is actually, if you look at the clear vision code, it talks about alleys and driveways and street intersections and alley intersection. Yeah. It's actually right at the top where it talks about the applicability of the clear vision area. And one of the things it mentions is driveways. And so that one should be either back further or although it doesn't, it doesn't distinguish. And so.
So you're saying that there's clear vision on all.
Yes, we're, we're actually dealing with that right now in Bridle on their alleys. They actually have tall fences along their alley that block their driveways. You can't see anybody coming out of their driveway and sort of right into the alley. And it has become quite an issue for us to try and get this resolved with them. So that's the reason I've been dealing with clear vision for about the last ten days now. So that's why I know driveways, it doesn't apply to. And so that would be the only thing. We can certainly pull the code out if you want. It's been assigned to this site. Just open a new window at the top there.
Go to our homepage? I think it's in the packet, isn't it?
It should be resolved.
I'm going to go to.
Where is it?
Right at the bottom left.
Well, it, it is for me normally, but this isn't my computer. This isn't my.
Well, we did mention a little bit.
The planning stuff. Yeah, he's been working on the planning pages. So.
Yeah, let it down a little bit more on the left hand side. But you have to go to the zone.
Sign.
It's going to be in, I think it's in, go up to the general review right there.
The general provisions. Oh.
And on the left.
I should have just done a search.
I can't remember where it is. I've printed it.
Sign standards.
No, no, I want to go.
No. Oh, well, let me do a search then. A now. Rear vision areas. Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, can you, can you open it? Can you open that section? There we go. So I take it back. It actually says except, except the C one zone. Or driveway providing vehicle access to public streets and pretty alley. So that's probably that to the driveways. That is, that is a little interesting. I'm not sure. I, I don't know why they would accept it in C one other than maybe a little challenging to get the signs out of that area. But it is a real concern. Obviously, you can see, you know, if you're in that driveway, if you want to go back to the to the, you can see if you're in that driveway and you got to turn to the left and you're looking for cars to your right. You probably have to come well forward of that sign to see the traffic coming. So if it was that further or maybe a little bit more down, you know, twenty feet, that would have been the standard to go twenty feet. They probably would have been a little bit better. But I do stand corrected, not in the C one zone. It's only, it's all other signs.
We need to make an app to the vision.
So there's one new task that came from this. Let's review the clear vision in the future, near future. Let's see if we plan to live upon that. So yeah, if you want to turn and just kind of zoom back down a little bit, there you go. You're, you're kind of getting the ideas. Go one more up. We can see the next monument signs.
Monument. That's.
So one on the left there.
Yeah, the, the little strip mall.
Again, it looks, it looks like it would comply with our current standards in terms of the square footage of the sign. And the location obviously is much better for the back and it allows you a little bit better view there. The only other sign really on this street in terms of monuments, the next one up, the rest become pretty much.
This one?
That one. Oh wait, there's one more I think to the north here, but you have this one. Little large. Looks like it's arguing with thirty-two square feet.
Per, per sign.
It's per sign, but it's from the bay. It's from the.
What is the, the sign area?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, I'd have to go major. It would be close.
Yeah.
It's wider than four feet. So they're very distant. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty close. It is, you know, it, we would have to major it and go back and look at the, the applications of your house and what happened though. But I, I think that's getting to be probably about the maximum size. And then we have this one here, which is a nice, which is a nice sign and it appears to be, you know, within the limitations that we have. And it also has the nice address sign. Maybe it would have been better if that was sort of front side or maybe it's double sided and that's why we did it that way. But anyhow, I think this sign is also a good one. So I guess the point of this exercise would just kind of remind you of the different times that we have. Some may or may not meet the current code. And so that would be an exercise for myself to go back a little bit and come back with you. But you know, here's a sign that we know we have a rule for. Here's the standards that were placed when they were approved. And, and see if there's any type of briefing that you would like to do to monument signs in the C one, C two zone. Not only date upon what we currently have today, but knowing that other folks have been trying to come in with bigger signs too. And to also see if it would make sense to put a height limitation on the ground mounted sign. So and when we spoke about it the last time, I showed us the, some of the literature fiction in the area what, what they had. And they would require a height between seven and nine feet of the max. And they had a little bit bigger sign area than we do. It was just most of what I saw ranged from about forty to forty-eight square feet. So a little bit more. And I'm not saying that though we should go. I'm just giving it to you for proof of thought. We see, you know, here's what we have. We have no height requirement. We just have a size requirement and it's only for the sign area. And that could be one, one thing you might want to look at.
Of all the signs, my perspective is this is the worst.
Why would that be? You can't read it?
I mean, a sign is for someone to drive by and see the business there. All of the other signs that you do and see the business, they know what it is. This is useless. I know. And that, that's one of the things where if someone already brought a question, is it per sign, per business?
Well, it's.
Or per sign?
They actually think of fifty square feet because it has to their, to probably to their street line and to drive. So they could have had fifty, fifty or something.
So my perspective is you want to balance with something that is not monstrosity, but something that is functional. To me, that's the functionality, unfortunately. Business. Yes. But in a case like this where a business has six hundred and thirty-two square feet, I would say we, we are saying thirty-two square feet, not per six business. That's maybe not functional. That limitation may also.
Yeah, and that is kind of what you're saying. You know, you're seeing ground mounted signs, advertising businesses, when you're seeing the, the kind of the plaque sign, if you will, the wall sign right hanging over the business, you know, to let you know where they're at. I don't disagree. I think if you're going thirty-five miles an hour down Blanco, which is the speed limit, that it could be a little challenging to see that. And that could be the, the precipice for why the Royal High folks wanted to make theirs bigger. Because if you look, and I know Commissioner Labonte here has it in front of her, but you can kind of see based on the dimensions of that sign, they were looking for a much bigger plaque, if you will, on their ground mounted sign.
Yeah, but again, if it's not thirty-two square feet, if they'd actually made it thirty-two square feet, it probably would be much easier, you know, visual to see from the wall.
Oh, that's possible. Yeah. So if, if within the code, would they have put six signs up each thirty-two feet, one per business? So the, the, the limitation is thirty-two square feet for what?
It, it's thirty-two square, square feet for a ground mounted sign, for the sign area, for the area that, that is being advertised.
So how many signs or why can't they have six signs there?
Well, I mean, they, they had.
For business or for properties?
Yeah. The way I, the way I read it is per property. Right, which the driveway would be serving the property.
Ten businesses in one drive, but not thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. No. So that makes it challenging to multiple businesses to have to see the drive.
This is a true thing. This property has that mountain sign and and the doctor's office sign. So they have three mountain signs.
Well, they have a back end. They have three driveways.
This one here, the electric sign. And then they have the one, well, I believe the one for the doctor's office is a separate property.
Yeah.
Or is it one? Oh, okay. But I, I stand corrected. It sounds like all of this is one parcel of land. I, I love there were two separate parcels. So it is one parcel. They do have three, they have three monument signs. Look at that, boy. So thank you for doing that. So in this particular case, this property has three ground mounted for all the different reasons out of that, which clearly would not work under the current code because since it is one property. I mean, it does say for driveway. Maybe there was an interpretation there that, you know, this property does have a driveway that goes down part. The doctor's office has a driveway that goes down to Pacific. And then you have the two other driveways that come out to Blanco. And I'm just kind of guessing here that maybe that was an interpretation made by the planner that was here at the time that it was per driveway. So they could be ground mounted signs.
This has one monument, all sign actions, thirty-two square feet for each driveway.
That's, that's what I was saying. Yeah. And since there's three driveways on this property, which property you know, five square feet sign. What? Isn't it just there's this one, then there's one at the other end where the other one was?
And there's one off the back.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that. I've been on that property. I remember coming up at zero nine. I mean, I've come in the, I've come in the Pacific way and I've come in off.
Yeah.
And then I've looked around.
See if you go, if you go right by Tennessee's back here, there's a driveway right here.
Oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know there was a driveway back there. And so again, that, that's my guess on how they got the three is because of the multiple driveways, even though it's one property.
So they can put all five signs out front. Doesn't it have to be?
It puts four each one. So yeah, but.
Yeah, and they kind of. Yeah. And then the one for the doctor's office, they kind of, they kind of split the difference between the driveway and Pacific and the one here off of Blanco. So maybe that one should have been over by Pacific, by, by that driveway. That does seem to be the intent of the code there is that these would be, you know, by the driveway to alert you that this is where the business is turned to the driveway there.
And actually, for properties greater than two hundred feet of frontage, they have a maximum of fifty square feet.
Yeah, so they, they could make a bigger sign.
So this property, or they're just provided, when we released the property tonight, they'll go larger sign.
We did this, we did this code, I think, just like three years ago.
How much frontage does Taco Bell have?
So in, in theory, the sign at the other end, the, the smaller signs that have been given stone, not one to the two square feet.
Right, they don't have a driveway there either. It's on this, it's on.
Yeah, right now there's no, there's no ground mounted signs for Taco Bell or the Royal High.
Yeah.
So they.
They only have the one driveway and it's off Pacific, right?
It's off Pacific. Yes. And so that, that was, you know, really the message we relayed back to the, the applicant and the property owner was that, you know, you're putting your sign away from the driveway. We went, we went to addressing the sign to be by the access, you know, with, with the street that the address is to. So we got that message and then we said that, you know, right now, we think it's just a little too big for us to really, you know, want. And so, you know, if you, if you want to withdraw, go ahead and withdraw, and then you can do this exercise and then see if there's a way to either have a bigger sign or to make a determination that, you know, this is going to be our max and what I'm doing there is the science.
I have some question about, it says no whole sign in C one. Pardon? No whole sign in C one. So.
Yeah.
When somebody comes in to take over a space and they're going to get a permit for a new sign. There's a whole sign existing, but that means grandfather again.
That is a good question and we, we're, we're looking into that to be honest with you. Because I, it came up with the Shell station because they wanted to change out some of their signs because it's going to probably be kind of safe station is what I understand. And so that's how I kind of found out about that part of the back of the sign code that I kind of recognized was called.
Business center.
Yeah.
A blue place and then they changed. So I'm trying to get a draw.
Yeah, and I. The, the way I believe we're leaning right now in those situations is, you know, if it's existing and all they're doing is changing the face of the sign, we would allow that. Well, we wouldn't allow them to change in terms of height or the size of the, the sign. Just as long as it's changing it out to just put a new business up there, we would allow the sign to remain.
Section for non-conforming signs.
Yes.
And who there's something that talks about like in the building, five, maybe it's damage to thirty percent of it. They're not rebuilding it at the same time.
Yes, yes.
So how can we apply that to older signs that you're going to improve by? No, it's fifty, fifty percent that basically you have to abide by the sign code then.
I didn't hear the first part of that. You said that they improve it by, by enlarging it?
No. So if they're damaged too, or they have to rebuild it or whatever, fifty percent is enough.
They would have to conform with the current code.
Right. So if that company applies to the older signs that like full time. Then in terms of by a value of fifty percent, then you have to buy by the sign.
Right. And that's why I'm saying if they just change the face down, I don't think they're going to hit that threshold. They're just taking one visit down, putting up a new.
So more than fifty percent of the sign is based on, so it's all is assignment.
Right. But the language says no additions or enlargements, meaning they do not conform with the sign.
Right. That's not good. It also says the sign hasn't been damaged during excess of fifty percent of value. Sun repairs, restoration, not start. Okay, so they lose their opportunity, it sound like.
Yeah. So if there was a pivot down, if it were a blow down in a storm, if it got damaged beyond fifty percent, or if they wanted to enlarge it, all those would not be allowed. And if it, and if it did fall down or again, something like that, then they would have to put a sign up that would conform to the current sign code.
Yeah, it says the sign has been damaged in excess of fifty percent of that under the sun. And repaired and restoration or not started within any days of the date, sign was damaged or not diligently pursued or started, but then it has no other verbiage. It's random occasion.
And you know, as, as we're talking there, that could be, that could be, you know, one of the sections we need to update, add some additional language to that for clarity.
Yeah. If that's your inverted back to current.
But I think what you're seeing there in the non-conforming signs is that we're, we're trying to recognize that, that some of these signs, you know, probably could have been permitted at a time when we didn't have this code. And I'm speaking hypothetically. I don't know about all the signs in the city by any stretch of the imagination. But sometimes that is how they become non-conforming. They were erected under a given code or a time when we didn't have a sign code. Then we adopted new code and we put these provisions in there saying, okay, we, we recognize that we have a sign that we currently don't allow. We're not going to penalize you for that. You know, we're going to keep it. But once you want to change it, alter it, do something more to it, that's where, that's where it's going to stop. And, you know, we'll still allow it to stand and change it out for your business. But if it does get damaged in a storm or some other event, an accident, whatever it might be, then the new sign has to conform to the current standard. Which is pretty common throughout sign codes. Because as you know.
If you look at the first one under A, it says non-conforming signs may be continually exist, subject to the following provisions. That is one of the provisions that we just put out. So it can only continue if it meets that criteria. If it doesn't, then it needs to come off. That's the way I'm attributing it.
I, I.
The first line item listed, A.
Oh, I'm with Confucius. Sign standards on the very first page.
Of our packet or?
Well, that's quite a little number.
It's under one five five. So it's under one five five point four one six?
No, it's just five point four or five.
You know, in instances where we have a conflicting language. The more restrictive of the two would be the applicable one.
But they still follow her if you go up to the top of it.
Yeah, purpose of just such a point of the shot line was. Under one five five, it's four oh five, it does the same.
Four oh five? I was looking at four one six, the non-conforming.
Where are we here? Yeah, it should be. There we are. One five five, four one six, is that what she's looking at? So.
Okay, so this is, this is what our.
Such an.
Yeah, however you guys want to do it, um why don't we, why don't we just fill up the um definitions like. I thought starting at commercial was was fine, but it sounds like maybe we, no, no, you're too far.
I did? Where?
Wait a minute.
Oh, there we go, okay. There's your definitions.
We'll go through it. Okay, so uh maybe what we can do is um instead of just getting every single one, maybe um. Does anybody? Have any, any declarations that you uh looked at, any, or look at one in particular right now?
For the question, I just figured over, I didn't have the screen to look at.
Maybe the better thing to do instead of removing two is adding abandoned or damage signs. These products, if you have a definition for damages.
Nope, nope.
So maybe, maybe what we do is we add the definition of damage signs, if there's no true open that was that definition. Uh I think you have a good point.
Yeah, that's fine. Why, this is somebody drives a property. And takes a. A hundred days to be going on their business in time with the past thirty ninety days. Would that make you? Your site?
Are you talking on or equal payment? And yeah, but we're moving the second.
But it's still kind of the same question.
But very much, the whole idea though is just to find the band. Against them, why does anybody? Nobody use, right, right, it's bank. So it doesn't make sense to have any. Either random, either bank. But it's just a bit of a hind water, the bank at the time that.
And that could be something, uh as I remarked, yeah, that would. Right. And and that might be something you would might want to add to that to thirty to kind of abandoned sign, like, you know. One year, two years, it's not, you know, where where's the duration of the abandonment, you know, how long does it not have to be used? To be abandoned, that could be something that could be added, and then again, we could add damage signs, they chew out forty fifty damage definition, so there's a little more clarity there.
Well, we've been doing it all for that, it almost seems like. Emphasizing the one that says the sign that is no longer you can use for damage beyond fifty percent.
Why would that be a ramp? So it may be still using it for a habit, even though it's more than forty percent damage. Well, and then you gotta hear it was a man. The sign's still on property, the sign, it's not abandoned, it's still there, so. Somebody cares, the business down, it's just the sign.
And this, again, this is very common, many, many signs are the rest abandonment and damage, um and so uh. You know, we can research additional definitions um and and bring that to you, uh you know, as we continue to look to see if there's a better definition we can get for abandonment. Again. I mean, the definition of for damage seems to be pretty good, but maybe we need more clarity on abandonment. You know, if the business is not in use and the sign is not, you know, advertised something for a certain amount of time for a a half a business, something along those lines.
Because it's a much tighter factor. For four to ninety days, so that abandoned for that.
Now, as we go to the actual, we go to the actual abandoned sign code. It actually states, the apartment has been used for more than ninety twenty days, someone being abandoned and shall be renewed by the property owner. They said that if the sign is a vacant parcel or virtual state, the sign shall remain, um provided as uh there is an active intention. They have a lease sign.
Well, there's a lot of this area, there's some wording, like, uh, everybody.
Well, that's definitely saying whether maybe we should.
I feel sorry for the city, yeah. Abandoned sign, everything begins with abandoned sign, then it says, if it's a damaged sign, it's a damaged, not. Going, code one eighty-five, four oh six, one eighty, I just wonder if everyone had that, anyone had that?
Well, interestingly, now the code.
That's normal, that's what.
So I mean, that's true, um I think you're you're following the point, is maybe, maybe we need to.
Well, that one definitely needs to be five or whatever, before there's anything else in it. No, without a mission.
Close, we have damage or nothing.
Something needs to be added, it would be, it would be better the definition, or there needs to be a.
Yeah, so what I'm what I'm hearing on this particular issue is that uh you would like staff go back, look at this definition and look at, uh what was that?
Four one six. Four ones, four one six, I think, four one five.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll kind of look at the definition of four one five and see how we can either. Move it all maybe to the definition section or just add some clarity to the definition and then have the abandoned sign section of four one five provide some additional. Um comment to that in terms of uh what it says right now, just to so sort of a little more linked up. And and uh kind of, right now, it seems like one is going in one way and one might be going as a direction. We gotta go to both like you were bringing out, so really get clarity on that.
I'm also with the staff. Hand it out for somebody who has a sign that should be banned. That should be all. Not having to be one paragraph here, but another paragraph, another definition. It's somewhere else.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I I when you have those types of codes like that, it's, it has picked up more than more blame. For example, I was just talking with Pilgo about their uh UPS warehouse out there off in uh Westing. He would share with me some of the errors that occurred, uh and it had to do with the staff missing a very important other code, uh. And so they did get a warehouse cited the way their code actually required it to be cited, so it is good to, you know, when you clean those things up, it is helpful. Do you see any other here on this first page that you want to talk about for the definitions? Let's scroll down a bit.
Probably just Dana, I don't know if you want to leave, um number five. Um the last sentence. Removed as we don't put by the city manager and pay attention to speed and stop.
Yeah, I think we could pick up, we could either put. Staff or or planning managers um out there and or your definition, I think is a better way to say that, that way. You know, if someone's not available, we still have the authority to assign that to somebody to to make a decision on that, so, good idea. And you know, you, we may want to go back and really take a deep dive into the electronic message attacks, but I think they're becoming more and more prevalent. And I know that those are signs, especially that gas agents really like to have, uh so maybe, you know, not only fixing five, but maybe, let's look at other definitions. Out there for a little time, so we might need to add something to the, to patch for, or potentially to be heading our way.
Those are. The one part that we start and change for copy, time then overlap. The one part.
Well, so if I manually.
Oh, he, cause he was talking about the changeable copy sign. Cause it kind of refers to the same as the electronic message sign here.
They do seem to uh. Play off of one another. And and you know, you bring up a good point about number five there and college too, we have other sections of our code, um for offensive examples, for example, um. That talk about the decision maker being Lori. Uh and not a, not a planner or a uh city manager, and so I don't think Lori wants to be the uh.
What?
Uh signs, uh so uh it could be another code that we might want to address, uh with kind of work. It's just how many type stuff, but um again, since we have the sign, I mean, the fencing issues in Brent Hill, we've been looking at. Provision and and sign, uh fencing part of it. Scroll back up just a little bit. I'll say down and up.
It it won't matter, I'll go the wrong way either way.
So is there, is there um some agreement to maybe. Doing something with changeable copy signs and like five times, if we eliminate one of those definitions?
The other ones. Unless it shake the.
Oh, I know who's talking about that. I think that would be well good. A lot of times with changeable copy signs, the ones that I'm familiar with are kind of pole sign with a with a um. Big sway area on it, and then they got those letters that you, you know, they can put up there and then they can take them down for something.
Oh, yeah.
That's kind of what I've seen there, maybe. Right, right, yeah, and and you know, because we don't allow pole signs, then we'll see one or see two zone, where are we gonna get changeable sign?
Well, do you want them on, if it's a gas sign?
Yeah, they could be monument signs.
Yeah.
Parabons in the shell sign could.
And so I guess what I was trying to get at that is maybe we could have some, you know, capable signs or ground mounted signs, pole signs, um whatever the case may be, wall signs. Uh and then they operate in its manner, but we take the electronic portion out of the definition and leave that round with the sound, with the, with that, something that would uh. Maybe help clarify a little bit. Maybe the one thing we do, what what we try to do in some of these times, we try to say, what is it, what is the ground outside, well, it's kind of having a taste, you have it like this. I think we need to change more copy time, it's a little vague, it could be almost any time.
It's definitely different than electronics.
So, technical signs, and I think that's adding some clarity to that. Okay, um are you ready to go down a little bit?
You know, let's go into the.
I'm sorry, what?
Column sign.
Column sign is a sign that for a recall to the minimum with the street entry. Or the. Call. For a minimum with the twelve. What's the thickness, what's? Which direction it's with? I mean, is it one phone and call that's a fifth or twelve inches, not a whole time? If it's loud? Square.
But all signs over ninety feet, wait, wait, I thought it's gonna be trouble personally, it was over.
Something on one of the pole.
Yeah. Playing the ground against the nine.
Eight inches, so two.
So if it's under ninety, it can be a column sign.
Yeah, this is.
The column sign definition seems to be speaking to uh when we first started looking at the signs coming down glenco there, the um. We wanted the shelf station where it had two poles on either side with the with the uh content in the middle of those two poles. Um obviously it's bigger, you know, than twelve inches and and eight inches, but I think, you know, they they went to the maximum, not the minimum.
So in other words, you're like the main one, it's twelve inches wide. How much thick? That was. I mean, there, there will be the definition. So there is no other definition, other than why? The width, and so is the width, but not looking at, it's very important for the.
I think that's a a good point, um really, there could be some, some language. So maybe on column signs, um look, look to see if we can approve upon that definition. To bring clarity into it, uh it could, you know, I was looking at it. I I think it's very vague. Okay, so we got that one, um anything else on this page? Okay, let's move on. Those are. Pretty. Self-explanatory, I think.
I don't say how high it is. Well, let's, let's. Instead of the height.
Yeah, I think this doesn't end the sign sections, they're trying to say that there's a plot, but we could, we could refer by that.
Yeah.
We might be good with each definition right there. We can move on to what's on it.
I didn't have any other questions.
Here only. It burns in the two year later.
Yeah, let's scroll down a little bit.
Okay.
The second one they all.
What was that?
Neural second one.
Neural, okay. We have a typo in there. Corrected with this effort.
Yeah. In the definition of, I just. But in the definition of, you know, how did? I know that there is. Means was not. The how did they?
They're not considered.
I know, but how did they put a zero containing electrical? How can they be a zero? But you have a zero or some.
Maybe the columns.
It didn't say. And perhaps it already. Didn't have a back door slide directly onto the to the right.
Well, you could, but. Yeah, we could debate some of it.
I'm trying to point out the. Part now.
Well, you don't have, but you can't say there isn't, but that's not, you know. Miracle. That's not. And that's. You can't call it a miracle if it has it, but you actually call it as a miracle. Thing where it's miracles. Which can go in. You can't say that here's what a miracle is, but it's not good, but we're calling it a miracle. You're saying number two there shouldn't have a word miracle. Or number three, or number. Because you can't define it by then defining it's the words.
So. But that's what I'm saying, right? They're saying the foul or not considered zero, one, two, three, or not.
That says miracles.
Right, but if you read it, it's a foul or not considered zero.
That's the double.
Foul or not considered zero.
Just replace. Just replace. An image containing electrical.
Oh, you're talking about the number two definition.
Number two or three.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't define what they're not at all from here.
Yeah, I'm with you. So we just scratched mural out on two and three, and we got it. Are we good here?
So when we talk about. Our monuments. Then they're back to the whole. You're saying that. Whole family. Every day.
Yeah.
So you know that we don't have a definition of a eight pound. So. I mean, excuse me, on a monument.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you meant.
A whole family is some is on a single.
Says by one or more.
By one or more support. That's more than nine feet. Well, a monument sign is one or two supports, but it has no.
Correct.
It does have a definition of height.
Yeah, well, excuse me, that would give you a height. It gives you the ability to create your own sign before they just go.
So if I take a monument sign. And make it nine feet tall, then it's not a whole. What's.
It doesn't know.
That's what I'm thinking. So I'm going to one of those. The monument sign doesn't have a.
I think it's like. Between the pole and the column.
Yeah, that's only column, that's why. So column, you can be a column. Well, oh, yeah. Eight inches wide, but we don't have to take it, but they identify. Basically, I think a pole and a single column are the same thing other than. The monument sign.
It's not, it's okay. Oops, I missed one.
It actually has a pole. I think that's it.
Four days. From the ground. And then you.
When you. The column hasn't been. Yeah, but say we should have said, say, as you say. The power.
And you know, one way of doing this, I mean, you have your definition that kind of describes what the sign is. But then if you were to go down and to say the commercial zone, we could at that point say a monument sign shall not exceed X B the height. Or whatever the sign may be that's allowed in that, you know, that. I think with the definitions, we're not trying to put heights in there so much. We're more trying to describe what the type of sign it is. With the pole sign, I think we need to put a little bit of a definition in there in terms of being off the ground. You know, it's a pole that you're going to have it up in there. So I can see whether you add in the definition there, but I think.
Oh, no, that's the. We're doing a hundred and two. No, not doing any more. So the pole signs are wide, I mean.
I think it's a lot of being definitely done, I thought. I know it's soft there.
Sounds. So there's not a lot of.
So you can you can have the sign. One four.
No, no longer. It's prohibited in models.
No, no, it's called a call. It's called a call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It can go up to eight, but you can't go over eight. Basically, the whole the the definition of pole sign requires, so especially if you go over eight. Column signs, you say, not operated when you see them, and a full time shouldn't be in there because we don't identify full signs in a pole. Because they're not allowed in any code. So we have to define them where it's both.
I'm guessing maybe because now that you informed me that you have done a lot of work on the science project, you knew that possibly it was an oversight where you you removed it from every zone. But we forgot to take the definition out of the of the chapter. Again, just kind of a. And and maybe, you know, maybe the bigger question, you were revisiting the thought of having full signs in any zone. Or are you comfortable with not having full signs in any zone and then pulling the definition out?
I think that was. I I know. I was always distracted by the. Dallas.
What are pole signs that say see column sign? And then.
But they're different.
So we're going. Would be definition for a pole sign. And so you see.
What will you do is we take all that whole definition and you say see column sign. And then let's do a little bit of.
The reason I'm questioning why should be column sign is because pole signs are prohibited in all of our.
That's why we don't want to.
Don't want to have a cross reference to see a different.
But we talked about all the.
But you see what I mean? It's it's prohibited in commercial and industrial. But yet you're then having a definition to say see another.
Okay. Other reason, I mean, pole signs say. Use the column. That's.
But it's all out, it's all out of the code. So there's why there's some definition.
Pole sign. One of the reasons why they may have that definition there is it's a very common sign term. And so for sign companies, that would be something they would probably look for. And then having that process that's back to the column signs will probably let them know that, you know, we're calling full size column size. And we don't do full signs in any zone. So when you get down there into the different zoning section, you will not see it. You'll see columns, and that's really what you need to pay attention to. Again, a full sign has been around for a long.
Everything shows up as a whole sign, but you can go column sign, it shows the.
So can I make a suggestion rather than striking it out because we have three properties that are non-conforming pole signs? Perhaps just adding to the definition saying something like. Currently non-conforming. Non-conforming signs or something so that. When you get into our definition or get into the code later, you see non-conforming, we know that's that's what we're going to.
But it's occurring in non-conforming, so why? That replies.
I'm worried about striking our definition that we have cited in our code.
But it's not. So.
It's not. It's cited in our code, it's not allowed. But we're not saying what the. What the definition. Okay. Any other definition?
Couple other head in the way. So going back one final time on full signs. Do you want to consider adding it to any zones?
Well, I don't see problems with that, but we're allowing. Higher sign for.
That's exactly what I'm going to say. We do have especially along West Union where, you know, the property has like maybe a flagpole that comes all the way out to the street for the business impact here. They wouldn't probably have enough space to put their sign at the driveway, but they can put a sign back at their property to sort of alert where they're at.
Doesn't have to be a flag, but it could be just a public road that goes back. From west.
Yep.
And then they can't put a sign out there because somebody else.
That would be another classic scenario where it's not a flag lot, but it had a lot off of like two eighty ninth at the back by the train track there. That would be another classic scenario where this could be a situation where a pole sign could really help that business. So it sounds like maybe maybe it's worth exploring. It's worth.
So exploring where.
Idea.
Where a. An even or access to the main road that sits back from the main road is certainly not been a full sign.
Yeah, and that might be the situation where we we work on the definition to bring some more clarity of what a full sign is. And then when we get into the industrial zone and we know that a full sign is allowed, they would say. An example like that, where your property is off the main street by a certain amount of feet or your flag lot or something in that case, that's where a full sign would be allowed. In that case, so.
You're talking about maybe one of the way back there by the road. What happens when when people miss this fall or fall building in front of that one? Are you going to make them go up further?
You're you're going to let me know. You're going to let me know.
I know.
You know.
I mean, other than the height of nine feet on the whole on the whole time column, right down to the same definition.
Maybe we can work.
Take out the.
Maybe we can see if we can better define columns.
I'll get rid of columns. Because they're only. They're only wrong in their brief.
It sounds like maybe there's a there's a little agreement on possibly bringing it back into the into the industrial zones. We'll have to work on what that looks like. You know, we're going to have some language for that, but also go back into the definition and. See if we can find a better definition for column signs to differentiate it from a full sign and then add some additional language to what a full sign is.
Now, since they're you're wanting, they're hearing, I think you're wanting to combine. Make it one and just differentiate with heights. Like a whole sign at this height is allowed, a whole sign greater than one is not allowed.
So you're saying delete the column and.
Well, I don't know. Okay, so if there's a thing called the column sign and a thing called the full sign, what's the difference?
Right.
One of them is either got one or two supports, and the other one has one or two supports. So they're the same damn thing. So if there's no difference in the width, the thing that does it support, hold on, they're the same thing. Get rid of a single column. A single book column, leave the two fold.
The column. Single hole. No, the hole and the pole.
Well, thank you.
It seems crazy enough to have the same thing.
So it should be called slash. So we define that's even.
The only thing I'd like to see is what height restrictions are in another jurisdiction.
Right, because I. And we may have a height restriction based on zoning and then also based on different. That different from the public.
Right.
Access, but it's not like that. In Ontario. That's Glentos and Ontario.
So just want to make sure everything, it's sort of like column is being more support than full in terms of having a definition.
Well, it depends on if it has one or two.
I'm coming to think that you want to get rid of one of these definitions.
I think they're the same thing. Well, that's why I think you get rid of one. Well, then you can't say that they're.
Well.
That's what I mean to say, right?
You would change.
You you.
Height restriction, so.
What?
Would not be restricted to see one.
It'd be the same as a column sign.
Yes, they're either allowed a definition of the other full. Wondering who supports, right?
The same as a column.
And as you thought, probably, you know, you know, when you look at signage, you know, your freestanding sign would be the big ones, the tallest ones. Your next tallest is generally the pole or the column sign, then your next one would be the ground mounted sign. And then everything from there would move back onto the property, more of a wall sign, a roof mounted sign, things of that nature. So I think when you're looking at those three that are more in the ground, it's we don't have anything for freestanding signs anymore. Only the ones that are McDonald's or Shell and Chevron are the ones that we're going to have. And so then it becomes a full sign and, you know, maybe nine feet is the maximum height for it, or column sign, whatever definition we decide, et cetera. And then from there, we drop down to the ground mounted sign. So maybe there's a hyper on that, so it's seven feet or something to that.
So if you have a whole time and I brought mirror function sidewalk, the bottom of it has the eighteen times, so then it's seventy one foot. If it has the maximum height of ninety.
Well, I'm saying.
Are we talking about the is that the maximum height of? The the port? Or the height of the sign? Because it's going to be an acre clearance if it's like the Republican. Sidewalk.
And then again, that's kind of the conversation, right? If if we're going to do it and we're going to allow it. What is the height? Is the height the pole or is the height overall?
Unless you're not going to allow it to come. Unless you're not going to allow it to come through the rim of the bar.
Right, and a full sign would be better than a driveway.
So it goes to not in the there.
Exactly. Or there was a, you know, whole, kind of be. Six people tall or whatever, and then, and then the sign was above that to a certain height. And in terms of, you know, four in it, so we could define, you know, our four column, whatever definition we want to use as having a maximum height of, say, ten. That means the pole and the sign together could be no more than ten feet. And if it's, if it's, you know, a short full sign and they want to put it in the clear vision area. I, I'd have to go back and double check, but I think it has to be a minimum of at least fifty tall to be in the clear vision. We would have to move it out of that area.
Well.
So it could still happen, but it would have to be moved out.
Three feet. Eight, it's clear vision.
Yeah.
So you can have a path over three feet and then you have to have poles cut out to eight feet. So you have a tree there, which is old, but it cannot be, have to be above.
Right, so if somebody came up with a full sign that was shorter than that and they wanted to put in the clear vision, we would not allow that. We would have them push it out of the clear vision. But they could still have the smaller pole or, or column sign. And again, it sounds like really. Or can we re-quit that? But that was the thing, that pole has to be eight and then so they get a one foot sign. Okay, I think we kind of went around on that one. I got a general idea of what you're looking for. Why don't we scroll down a little bit?
So I have a question regarding to sign. I had asked at one meeting and then did an email to you about the Taco Bell. And on the north side of the building. There's a couple innies in there. And I said, those are signs and you said they're not signs. Because they're decorative. But sign is a symbol or trademark or an image logo. Yeah, you know, logo, there's definitely a logo in those innards. So to me, those are signs. By definition.
We've worked on it.
Well, I mean, like I said, all those franchise places like the McDonald's and the Chevron and the Shell or whatever it's going to be. They're inundated with signs and logos, so I think they're all in violation of what our code is. So we either need to have something to bring them into compliance or modify our code or make some exceptions to it. Because it's kind of rampant because then they go along and they put those flag signs out.
I hate those.
But we have many of them.
Yeah, I hate those things.
Then, but coming down, but there was this whole flag out.
Sounds like maybe, maybe the definitions here are generally okay. You want to scroll up there. I think we're almost through the definitions.
We find some.
So what are we discussing with that hero? Well, that's. But. That's a, you were mentioning that heroes shouldn't be advertised as a wall sign. Sounds like it sounds. Right, and heroes should be defined with not being advertised. Which should be defined as article.
I, I think, anyway, the issue, I think, really the conversation is, do you want these type of franchises cited all over the place? Or do we want to minimize that? You know, for example, what did you refer into on the Taco Bell building? That those just were placed without any request. We thought they were actually like a latex type of, like on the skin, you know, you see people put on their vehicles and whatnot. It's, it's not that. It's actually a, about an inch of an inch piece of plastic that's screwed into the wall. So I went and, you know.
North side, it's just, it's a, it's the bell.
Yeah, it's just like, and then it has like an degree, it kind of like makes it with like three.
Yeah, it sticks out from the, from the building.
So you produce artwork, it has to apply to every.
Except for every fourth time, so it sounds like. They would be allowed.
Right, but how many wall signs do they have?
That's why I thought about the staff. So again, I, I think kind of the question is, do we want to make some type of special. A, addressing into the code here of franchises, you know, and kind of. Recognize them for what they are and how they like to advertise their, their businesses, which is more signs than anybody else has on the theme. Or do we want to?
They're going to do what you're going to allow them to do.
We have a lot of enforcement to do here. And I, I wish we'd had a total enforcement person because that's how much there is to do. It's challenging to do the day-to-day kind of stuff and then do a hundred percent total enforcement, so. There's a couple ways to address that. Wanted to bring it into compliance, as Chuck mentioned, by updating the code to recognize that or really do a. A full funnel on enforcement, right? And then pen after these posts and get these signs out of there.
Well, at what point would a sign on going to be for?
Pardon?
At what point would they be enforced?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We, we would start doing enforcement based upon, we.
Prior to. Their elevation drive, so they're going to have that on.
Not always, not always. We don't get that level of law.
Well, and I don't think we should make special business actions for franchises because everybody wants to have them that. And that's not fair to anybody else. If they, oh, well, they would, you know, so what you do, chart. Did you want to have more signs?
And how would you do that? I mean, in terms of, you have a provision in the C one zone that says this.
I just think, you know, the code says that if you want more, then, you know, you have, there's got to be something that's done. Do, is allowed.
Right, start a story.
In, in simple.
I, I think we can use here rather because to do enforcement, we can do that. Like I said, you know, Taco Bell went at risk placing those white. Bells, if you will, on the side of the building there. It's never came to us to ask for anything. They showed up.
Oh, that's my point. They did, they said they wanted.
They weren't out on that building, you know, the designer.
If I were to indicate has, the contractor asking how that elevation building. If they submitted that.
Because they, they actually did that. After they got the design review, then they came back and submitted an application for the sign, for the sign that shared the name of the apartment, so we're not part of that request. But it made it for us.
No, but they, but it does according to this, like if nobody's there. Well. I, I can see how they.
They didn't want that for, I mean, in terms of what was approved, they did not ask for any signage with the design with you, with just the buildings. And, you know, the overall site development itself is what was approved, not any signage without approval.
Well, it wouldn't ask for the signage either, like about anything. Again, there's no enforcement.
Well, that's what I'm doing. I mean, I think, you know, enforcement needs to be ramped up, you know, that is something. We're, right now, we're packing fences. We have some temporary towns that need to come down that have been up for like things and other things that are still up that need to come down. I bet they're all.
I'd have to do that.
What, if it gets to in the murals and though they're not considered the murals, it's had and never had even before and say logos.
Advertising?
Advertising trademarks. If you can say, no, then it's not part of the building.
I just don't know the answer. You have to get a permit for doing that. But you have to get it.
I, I, I think if you go into the commercial zone, there, there are murals that are allowed and I would say you absolutely would be happy.
Well, yeah, it's in the code, so.
Because they're, they're, how else, how else could we kind of get an idea of what's going on in the building? Well, I mean, one, one thing you might want to look at on the, on the mural side, you might want to actually mention all the clients for a mural. I mean, can they, can the mural a whole wall?
Yes.
No, no, I agree.
I was going to say, there's buildings down, down, it's a whole wall.
I mean, one of the things we might want to talk about in the mural stuff is, you know, you know, profanity, you know. Certain things might be appropriate and, and, you know, that might be a way to look at that. In terms of if I'm going to do a review of a mural, then I would want to say, okay, it can be as big as it wants, it can cover the whole wall, but we're going to limit some of what the message that's on. So, I mean, otherwise there'd be no, there'd be no real reason to redo it at all. So, and that, that's the other thing. I'm just trying to define that a little bit more, so we know what we expect.
Well, I think. I would not have made that, that was a cat to the first. Okay, so it's a page, but I don't know if they had, it was, I don't recall. Of course, we didn't have, have committed that we were a stupid building. Perhaps they would have, you are.
Well, I mean, technically, to the extent that there is a sign from every fire from there, they should have paid for it and submitted the advertisement for that.
Yeah.
You know, just like we're doing for the new public work buildings or working on the time of year, I think, you know, we're kind of.
I just didn't know it was.
And I don't know the answer to that. I'm saying based on how I'm reading the code, it, it seems to say that we should, that we're saying how it is allowed into the zone. But if there's really no standard, you can just do whatever you want on it, then what's the value of reviewing it at all? And, and pay, pay someone, just go paint your building any way you want, right? So maybe there is some, that would bring some clarity to that and, and seeing if there is a value, you know. Doing a mayor of mural with you, because again, I would fear it should be artwork, but that's, you know, artwork can be.
Subjective, yeah.
Well, I, I, it is eight thirty, we've been here for an hour and a half, I don't know if you guys want to take a break? If you want to keep going further on this or maybe just, we made it to the definitions and then next day we'll come back, we'll go to the zones. I'll say as long as you want.
Okay. But I just have a question on that window sign. It refers to. Signs.
Or on, on, yeah.
And so the question is, when they say install, we're not in about. This is a kind of installment, because I mean, you know, for instance, tavern has to be on the side. Obviously that's signed in a window, but if you put up a poster, a flyer, is that a sign? And maybe advertisement, but you know, for instance, I do that because they're going to say, well, they're. Cooking that, that grand over with the water. Technically, it's a sign in the window, so it's just not. Or we're, 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 we're. We'll let you do that steering the conversation.
That might be something we want to look at. I don't think we have a definition for neon signs and I don't see it allowed in right now. But as you know, neon signs are prevalent, if you met me, I'll just open a photo back. You know, in stores, but particularly in bars, you know, there's vendors like to get one of their neon beer advertisement signs or, or. You know, and they roll through that stuff pretty regularly, and then they also have a lot of, to your point of the posters or whatnot. They also, you know, the distributors, whatever the latest marketing efforts, you know. Budweiser's, the cheap distance, Coors, the cheap distance, you know, and they roll that through. I don't have a problem when they find a door on the wall and they're just pouring it up and down, but you know, when you start getting into the window, I think you do start kind of getting into. Is that a sign for the definition or what is a window sign, what does it consider? So maybe we should dive into the window definition a little bit more, survive from the comparison.
Well, I mean, yeah, we're going after one, you know. One type of franchise perhaps, because we need to get a look at the whole. I mean, I don't want to pick on individuals, you know, because that's how we, sort of. Strive to be a sign, to have a. What do you want them to count with?
Absolutely, that, and as you well know, signs have a huge impact on that, on what your town was like, and, and, you know, I use the bar example, I think another good example is Chevron. There were a lot of customers in their windows, you know, with their marketing efforts for whatever it is, I have a vendor, Shell goes back quite a day. And so, to your point, I'm, I'm not trying to take things away from people or maybe trying to help provide clarity on them. And again, this could be. We're talking about it right now and I, I'd like to get through the whole thing and I don't think we'll get through the whole thing tonight, but probably another second on this. But once we kind of define where we want to go with this, then we would open up an application for a code amendment. A tax amendment to this and send out, I think it would be a good idea to notice the businesses along Blanco, along the Marshall, the industrial boats. At a minimum, at a minimum, those boats. I don't know how much they need to go out and advertise to the neighborhoods, right? The residents, I don't think that's worth.
Oh, they just, yeah. Industrial and commercial stuff.
Right, which is already going to be a big number of, you know, notices to send out, but I think they're, they'd be the most impacted and maybe good to have to come to the table. They can help provide some clarity on what they do and, and how they interpret some of their signings. And we could also, at that, I use it as an opportunity to put some of them on notice, you know, you actually do have an update for me. Um and we could also at that time use it as an opportunity to put some of them on notice, you know, you actually do have enough information, so if you're going to change anything, you're going to be limited, so don't touch it. Also, really also, I think vinyl sign has its special on the wall of all. The words inside. And we don't start it up so early, we do the wall.
Oh, actually.
Right, yeah.
Well. I mean, one I would want to do is that. As we're looking at a downtown. Uh revitalization of the downtown core, uh you can make. Something like considering. You know, consistency, so the the downtown doesn't look like a hot box. And I maybe there is two only wall, not to say. You know, because you're trying to change the look. Then you have every business that has a different sign that can put different advantage.
You that you came off that conversation uh a little bit in terms of like um. For lack of a better term, like theme counts, for example, like Sifter, uh some of them are on code, like in Cincinnati, some of them are are candy, you know, they really want. Things to look a specific way, uh Sifter being a classic example, you know, if you went through there recently, they got a McDonald's over there on the west end of town there, um and it has to look. Generally like a western style type of building, you know, and they did that with the subway, and they did that from the new IPA store and whatnot. You gotta comply, and and so maybe for the science, or what we might want to do is. You know, we'll have our C one and C two zones, but then we can have the downtown C one, C two, and have a little bit of different standards, um for those businesses that are on commercial street that. Um it would become a part of the downtown improvement plan. And so, uh, I think that's a of something that is worth considering, absolutely. And so, um. Again, I've been at it for an hour and a half, but I could use a quick break to interrupt, and maybe somebody else does too, but uh. If you want to keep going, I'm fine with that, uh but maybe it would be better to just, so we have good energy and nobody tired, uh. Stop here for now, undefinitive, come back next weekend, we go through neighborhoods, commercial and industrial. And with those, and see if we need to make any tweaks, and then at that point, um talk about um a tax amendment, and and what that process would look like. Who is good to notify, uh and when you start putting this in promotion, so we can have the hearing, uh because I know largely we don't have a lot of people in our town. But if we're gonna start touching signs, and we're gonna advertise this to industrial and commercially owned properties, there are going to be people sitting here. Asking us questions. So.
Yeah, that's fine, you move on, uh. If I move on, you you still need a break.
Um if if you can give me two minutes, I can write that. A little too much?
All right, we'll move on to, I have a designer's uh landing application, and we do contact the monthly report. The uh instructions that we uh land this back stage for. I was just trying to ask, uh. Has there anyone applied for demolition to that, or the corner of the college and.
I've not seen anything. That's a cute question, I have seen there's equipment out there on that topic, but I've not seen.
I that's what I thought, they were waiting for demolition.
And they they may have, they may have gone to Washington County for a product, that that's who issued it, but they do still need to come to us, um and I've not seen anything here, so maybe there is a. Uh some outreach, we might need to do like a month, but also permit to us. Yeah, go by.
And uh. Something else on A's and B's to move. I guess I did have a question on the. Well. All right, so uh question is. On the second page on number eight, we just made. Uh it's about, you know, church both sidewalk will connect. Uh appropriately at the 309th North Avenue. And I was looking at the impression that. The sidewalk on 309th is going to be a lot of. Because that's where the signal is on. Uh North Avenue. But yes, we'll be doing a sidewalk on 309th on the left side of. And I'm not sure how that.
I I will have a look, I'm not familiar with that. But that's predating me and and uh I think that probably was done with with Andy and Heather's, so I could sort of think of that.
Well, it just is about the connect appropriate.
Well, you you're talking about the downtown improvement.
No, I'm talking about three hundred and ninety fifty, yes, maybe.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I I don't have the background on that, um but I'm certainly happy to to find that out, and I can email you what the what the answer is to.
Uh number eleven, stop sign. The last sentence, so within addition, dollars and barricades will be instructed along the west end of the cottage. I'm not sure what cottage has to do with the intersection with North and Main. To meaning that it's under the.
Header of, yeah, I think that's what. What they did, what's.
There's signs saying you're not permitted to go. Yet there's nothing keeping you. They're just putting in a stop. They're putting a stop sign at Main and North, and Main and Commercial. But why are we referring to. But that's not stop.
Well, it's a type of stop. It's a.
It's a hard stop.
Yeah, it's a, it's it's kind of grouped in with that, yeah.
You know, I'm I'm just a picture section of this, like I am lacking some um information as as the new guy, um. But uh I'm happy to look into anywhere these sending emails out to, so um. Is that one you would like me to get some additional information on, do you have the stop signs and and the barricades?
Well, I don't care about the stop.
With the barricade.
But I didn't understand why the barricade happened.
Yeah, I think it just got lumped in there.
And the last one on the the final stage.
Yes.
Uh they there's four.
Not yet. They, there was a pre-op meeting in September.
Yeah.
But that's as far as it's gone.
They've had a three hour meeting, and then they also did the neighborhood meeting.
Any other questions on that? And then we'll move on to. I have a number ten. Five to the sign.
Just so, if you could just provide a quick update on the Far West application.
Yeah.
Finally, something that's something.
Yeah, right now, um we have sent them an incomplete letter, uh there's some stuff they they needed to go back and reanalyze the uh left turn lane. Uh using the standard they were supposed to use, they did not use the ASH standard, they used a a separate set of standards. So they need to go back and and put an exendum into their um analysis there for that, um we had them, um. Oh, what were the other ones that were in there, um? We asked them to put together a phasing plan for it, um. I'm sorry, I can't remember them, they were very minor, they were very small issues, oh, we asked for a uh a turning radius uh for the trucks, um. So you know, just little things like that, it wasn't, they weren't major issues, um and so they're working on that right now, we sent that out last Friday. Um we've had some brief communication with them just to clarify a couple of things, and so I anticipate getting the updates from them probably next week, that's quick. Um in which case, then we'll send out notice to the neighbors, uh get that process moving along, that'll be a two week period. Um once the notice is over, then we'll start preparing the staff report and scheduling it for this. So, uh it's probably. Late February. Early March for for some hearings.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, late February, early March, for what, for hearing?
For hearing.
Yeah, we only have one meeting a month is what he's saying, so it'll be early March.
Right, right, I'm sorry, I forgot.
We won't. Yeah. So we won't have time to notice.
So yes, I would anticipate March, most likely, it it could push a little more, it comes against, if they if they get this stuff in those quickly, we could be, we could be in March.
Do we know, has there uh been a deal for.
Next week.
Tuesday. Cause Monday's a holiday.
Yes, Monday is a holiday, so will be Tuesday.
Council meetings Tuesday night.
I mean, every every decision is a tale of.
I know, but when you decrease the commercial size that much, when our, we have. We have a economic opportunities plan that saves where deficient and influential. I I don't understand what this is for. Saying it's not necessary.
I I. We'll see where the city council goes.
But just in case. The binding commission is the member of city of nine, said we are not prepared to.
I deeply respect that everybody, you know, I think that's about enough.
Isn't this on public record right now?
And yeah, it will, you know, there, the documents will be in the agenda packet that you guys saw when they presented and.
No, but.
We have provided background, we provided background on the uh April thirteen uh work session, um we provided background on the October twelve um hearing that you had. Um so we we try to give them, you know, because their appeal is specific to that condition of approval, that's the only thing they're feeling, they're not appealing their full approval, they're only appealing that one specific condition they were on. And so we're trying to keep the focus on what the appeal is, not the overall.
They'll they'll, they'll, the no, your notice of decision will also be in the packet. So they'll see.
One thing. Then take the other things we gave them, because we made the compensation going. We gave them, we told them, they didn't have to wait five years, so you can't just say, oh, we're gonna feel that one thing, but we're gonna still take that other stuff that the.
But she's out there with something.
Yeah, well, it shouldn't be happening. All right, item number eleven, Jack time.
Um. We do have a um request from Leonard to modify one of the conditions of approval in the uh. Phase two, three approval that he did, and what they're trying to do is align the condition with the development agreement. For the timing of the um Blanco North uh Shadyburg intersection improvements, and they're actually making it more restrictive on themselves uh to get it done quicker. Um and so, uh what they're trying to do though is allow for um. Some houses to get started in phase three, so they're actually, what they're trying to do is. Not only have to go with phase one, phase two, let them get some housing in phase three, but chat the overall housing at the number, actually below the number that is in the development agreement. So, uh, the development agreement says a two hundred, at the occupancy of a two hundred and fifty eight home that those improvements had to be done, what they're saying is, um. We will do it prior issuance of a two hundred and forty eight permit. So they're. They actually, they're in that process right now, so what they're doing is they actually have all their plans under review as once they're there, and they're gonna start doing that work and um. Uh in the springtime, but in in the meantime, what they're trying to do is get some building permit for our home in phase three.
So that's the purpose is to get it. How can start in the phase three?
That seems to be the general idea is.
They just were waiting until it triggered.
I will, since they have the burden of proof, I will let them make the arguments to you.
So I. Will it be coming to the plan?
It will be, yeah, I anticipate that will be coming to you um next, next month.
Anything else on that?
Um we also received uh an extension request for the church today, um that will also be coming to you. Um so they received design review approval back in, um I believe it was twenty twenty. Um we granted them one extension already, and they are seeking for another extension, um so that will be coming before you, um probably. Maybe even have emergency meeting. And you two in March. No, that'll that'll come, you know, we will just keep rolling it out here. So it'll probably be around it.
That's true.
The extension?
The extension.
That should. That's pretty basic, isn't it?
Well, I I have, I have other applications that are before them. So as I'm working through my hundred and twenty day clock and everything, I got to take the first one, before I can take the second one, because I got to. In case they appeal, in case something happens, I got to make sure I have enough time. Right, but they they submitted the application prior to the expiration date, so.
That will be the first.
Long as the.
That'll be the first time this has ever happened. Extension you can get taken to the next meeting.
If I could do it myself, I'd write it right now.
Now, that's fine, I'm just saying. In my twenty twenty years on this, I've never had that before. You have anything else?
Not right now.
An anonymous stat. Question.
One question. Who could be, who wrote the questions for the last survey?
I'm not sure.
It was, it was, yeah, it was. Um Andy and Corinne are com- communications consultant, and I think Robin. Like what, what?
Like, how many times in the last twelve months have you attended a church service? I'm like, what?
Yeah, it's. I don't know, there.
I I don't.
Are you kidding? We had it posted everywhere for the last two months. We had it, we had it on the social media pages, it was this banner across the city webpage. Since the middle of December, the very top, as soon as you. Since the middle of December, the very top, as soon as you pop on the city webpage, it said. Oh, well, yeah, it comes up from that, but. Well, and the newsletter, it gets mailed out on the first and the, um. The survey was, you had until the ninth. So that should have given you a week since, from the time you got your newsletter, I mean, you're, yeah.
I just got one thing.
Yeah.
Good old North Plains Post Office.
Um, we updated all of our, um, application forms, um, so I think you will, might want to choose on to the planning webpage and take a look at them, they're all fillable now, so you can actually fill them out. On the webpage there and print them, um, which is really nice, and I, I think we made them a little bit more user friendly too. So, take a look there, uh, we also moved a link on, so we can get to the planning page now, you can get your forms and fees, so we have the fees that go on there, we have all of our forms, we have a form for sign permits, specifically for town permits now. We have our building permit form, we have a type one, our type two, um, we have a fencing permit, so instead of having one application form that encompasses everything, we've broken out a little bit. And I think it's going to be a little bit more user friendly, and we also put, um, a link to the code on the planning page, because you used to have to go into the business. Link at the top to find the code, but now the code is with the planning, that's it, so hopefully it's a little bit more user friendly, I encourage you to take a look at it, and I'd appreciate any feedback that you may have.
I had to look all over just to try to find the.
So, I, I, I appreciate your, your frustration, and I hope we made it a little bit more user friendly, and we, uh, that's plan, let's get it all back, so we can roll it out for twenty twenty two, so I'm sorry, we didn't have it right there at the end of the year for you.
All right, and the other flying commission was. And then our next regular meeting will be February eighth here, that's the one I posted, and so. The last little adjournment, uh, is fifty four.